All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Jennifer, if we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnaman?
Yes.
Ms. Glavine?
Yes.
Ms. Shu? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a call. All right, first item, the consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like to pull out the consent agenda? All right, thirty-nine, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move to approve consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay. Second, Jennifer, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnaman?
Yes.
Mr. Glavine?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, is there any public? No public. Next item was staff reports. Kate?
Yeah, I'm gonna say everything I put in my report, I just wanna remind the board I'll be on vacation next week, so probably you will be looking down the port. In terms of reopening, no really any changes. We are just waiting on the CDC to announce the vaccinations for five to eleven-year-olds, which everyone is hoping will come very soon. So we did talk at the task force this week about rolling that out and having some sites, and the village is working on that, and we will of course be happy to help. And that is it unless anyone has any questions on anything in my report.
Okay. Next item, board member reports. I'll start off. There was an EDC meeting last week. The primary purpose of the EDC meeting was to talk about transportation within the village. There were representatives from PACE talking about the different bus routes, all the different options for people coming to the village to be either on a bus or once they get into the village, they have transportation options within the bus. The PACE talked about the different van routes that are available for businesses as well as some of their existing ride-sharing or van-sharing arrangements. A lot of that has been put on suspended use during the COVID pandemic. And they also talked a little bit about how before the pandemic, there was analysis of the routes within the entire North Suburban area and their whole system, as one route's going to be redundant or be able to be combined. That was put on hold because of COVID when they had all the monetary issues and had to shut down. A lot of work was going on. So there is no plan right now to, this is right eliminate some of the routes that people thought were gonna be eliminated that go through Northbrook. But some of the temporary suspensions are resulting in things like the vans that would take to train stations to different corporations not being there. They are, they said, back into the black, so to speak, in their budget. Yeah, I'm not really wasn't much, what else they might be doing to change, because they're still working through a lot of other issues. It was, I didn't read all my notes, so I don't have the name of it. North Suburban organization that's inside PACE that also deals with coordination between all the different transportation entities. I was there speaking. We actually had about ten minutes to speak in time, so it was online. The other big item was the six P request that we're gonna get to later in the agenda. Basically, when we get to it, it has been approved so far by both the EDC and the ICDC. So there is a fair amount of support for this six P request when we get to it. And there wasn't much to talk about in terms of the village on COVID issues within the village or construction. Most of what they were talking about is just kind of status quo.
Maybe you mentioned a ranger broker?
The village is hiring a broker or hiring a broker for ranger.
Yeah, Bushman and Wakefield.
Yeah, so that's up for marketing. The village is leaving open what's gonna happen with that property, whether or not it can be redeveloped in some way, shape, or form, to wait and see who comes in and proposes what for it before they can make any decisions of what to use or leave. Green Acres, they're talking about the possibility of a senior housing facility. Our company does see a lot of facilities requiring it, but it's very preliminary stages of getting board interest. So whether or not that will be improved use.
Will that property remain, can they subdivide it or does it have to remain?
Which property?
The Green Acres, I'm just curious.
Green Acres, this is gonna depend on what's presented and what will be approved.
There has to be a sufficient amount of green space for it to remain.
Right now, it's open space. So anything that comes in to do something different, whether it's residential, multifamily, like a senior housing facility, it's gonna have to get its own approval changed. So it's gonna have to go through all the processes of getting those type of things changed. So that was the majority who was talking at the EDC meeting. Any other board members anything you want to present? Okay, here we go, and I'll move on to the unfinished business. Fiscal year twenty-three levy draft. Anna, did you want to present anything?
I just wanted to say, based upon the last meeting, I am presenting a 2.5% total tax levy increase like you had agreed to at the last meeting. So if you approve that, we'll proceed from there.
Does anybody have any question for now? Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three levy in the amount of nine million, one hundred twelve thousand, five fifty, or the 29% levy increase that Anna described?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so Jennifer, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnaman?
Yes.
Mr. Glavine?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical? Yes.
Okay, the motion. The next item is the trustee vacancy applications. We're gonna hold that off until we get to item ten, the closed section. After that is new business. First item in the new business, review of serving our public 4.0. Kate's gonna give us an overview and answer questions about the pre-capita grant application requirements.
So every year, the state library requires the trustees to do some form of training. This was the exact same as what we did last year. Last year, the serving our public 4.0, which is the state standards for the libraries, was brand new, so this is the second year. Not much has changed. We had a few things open on it last year that we did not do. And in our discussions last year, the board felt that it was more important to focus on dealing with the pandemic, which I appreciated. And so the main things are written succession plan. We of course have lots of procedures for things, but we don't have an official succession plan. Facility upgrades, which we continue to work on each year with the building. We have our twenty-year facility plan. And then they also recommended a new policy for security camera usage, which we'll be working on when we upgrade the security cameras next year. In all other areas, we are either meeting or typically exceeding standards when it comes to our collection size, staffing, programming. What we are offering, we are, we're doing really well. And there aren't any, any issues. This is for all of you to review, so you know where the library stands. And if you have any questions, I will be then bringing the pre-capita grant next month, which will say that you guys reviewed all of these things. So I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the checklist or any parts of serving our public.
Anybody have questions, Kate? Okay, thank you, Kate. Next item is the class six P request for forty-sixty-five Commercial Avenue. So this is a commercial building that's been vacant for three or more years. It is on Commercial Drive. If you were familiar with, we're Commercial Drive and Saunders Intersect. You know that near the end of that intersection, there's the big Waterworld Building, which backs up to the tollway. This is the first building on the other side of the street. It is a building that right now has been primarily for the prior owner uses it as office space. It's more of a commercial industrial space. It has, I believe they said, twelve-foot ceiling, so it's not the standard height for a new building anything to get if you're going into an industrial or commercial space and you want to have some form of manufacturing or heavy use in it. It's not quite suited to more modern uses. It doesn't have the same number of docks and the same asset or trucks that a newer, more modern building would have. So it's the type of building that because of its age is having difficulty locating someone to buy it and use it in that kind of intended use. The buyer who's requesting the board class six P is an existing Northbrook business. They are a medical supply manufacturer and distributor. The owners came to the EDC meeting to present with their attorney and answer questions. They are growing. They want this facility in order to increase the amount of the manufacturing they're able to do on site. The owner talked about how at one point he considered outsourcing, and because of quality concerns for what he does, he did not want to outsource. He wants to keep all the manufacturing in-house. And his business, he said, has grown year after year. He's expecting to expand personnel over the next ten years to add, I think, with roughly thirty additional employees. He's adding one or two lines of his manufacturing, and he's increasing the size of his office space. So it's really the type of use that he was intended to be in that kind of area. He wants to stay in Northbrook. I believe he said he lives in Northbrook or in the area, and he likes having Northbrook as his vocation. He's shipping his product internationally. He talked about how he's a exporter to China, which is where most people are employed, China exporting. And he really expects to be in this building for long term. Because of the age of the building and the length of time it's been vacant, the type of use and all the, oh, he's putting over, I think it was half a million dollars of improvement into the building in order to make it work. And he talked about the fact that with the type of operation he has, it's extraordinarily expensive for him to move from one building to another. So once he's in here, he's unlikely to easily move to another one. Plus, he would grow at such a rate that he needs a double or a triple space from what he's gonna be in this new space, which is more than double what he has now. So anyways, for all these reasons that he's presented, it's been overwhelmingly in favor in terms of the responses from EDC and ICDC. And I believe the village has been highly positive behind his request. At the village meeting when he first presented, there was a number of questions that were asked, and he came back and answered in a way that addressed all the questions that were asked of him in a positive manner. So he's really doing what he can to work with the village. One of the questions was wanting more green space because he had more parking than he needs. And so he was talking about taking out some of the parking and creating green space, using it for things like picnic areas for his staff to be outside. So basically, I mean, it was just very positive in terms of the support for this six P request. Northbrook is typically supportive, but not always. There have been a number of requests over the past few years where the requests have come in on buildings that haven't been vacant long, and the answer's been no, you're not really what it's for. So having said that, does anybody have any questions about this request or six Ps in general? Barbara, if you're familiar with the six Ps?
I had a chance to look at, I think it's a win-win. I liked his presentation, and I think the use of the space.
Yeah, I mean, it's apparently high-tech business in the medical field in terms of what he's doing with the bandages and all that. And he hires a lot of skilled people to do his own research and develop his products.
So I don't know if I didn't catch this in the documents, but he has a current location in Northbrook, which is not, does not have this exemption.
Right, he leases right now, and so it's.
Oh, so he's not paying the taxes anyway?
Well, the way most leases work, though, is whether or not you pay taxes.
They build it into the.
You see, they build into your rent, or a lot of commercial is done on a triple up. So the tenant will pay the base rent plus whatever the taxes are they paying, either their share of it or they own that old building, the full amount of it.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that revenue can be replaced by another tenant in his old location, even though it's not, so it's not like, that can continue to provide whatever the.
Correct, so he's not leaving a place that has a six P or another place.
That's why I was asking, thank you. There's much more, it's a simple way to say it.
Get it in a building that, I mean, one of the things we've talked about in the EDC and ICDC joint meetings over the years is that the industrial areas in Northbrook are older. Like, this is a building that would not be able to be used, and so that is, that is a concern, right? Of having these buildings go vacant and not be able to, you know, to get occupants for them. So the fact that he would be here for easily, you know, a few decades, I mean, he was, it's a good thing for this, because then by that point, hopefully, you know, maybe build a new.
Well, the tax revenue is offset by the business and the growth and the business, hopefully, that they're giving to downtown Northbrook launches or whatever, so.
And that building's sitting empty anyway, so.
Yes.
That was definitely the argument anybody's charging that.
Yeah.
What his people, you know, his employees and his, the people who come to this business, the Bycram FDA, I guess, have a lot of salepeople coming and seeing what's.
Oh, so there's even vendors.
Right, that's helping to offset through the sales tax revenue and through using the hotels and the restaurants and most of that revenue. That's always questionable, because there's always been favorable projections made by the attorney who is presenting on behalf of the person requesting. So if it's a wash, that's good. If it's a slight loss, it also may be good because you're still keeping a tax base at a higher level than it may be at the end.
I think it does seem like a, a lot of it to Northbrook.
Okay.
So is there a motion to recommend that the village board recommend approval for the class six P request?
Motion to recommend approval for the class six P.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. We can do a roll call vote for this, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? All right, so by voice vote, we pass the motion.
And then I follow up with a letter to the village that gets presented to the village board that, you know, the library board is in favor of moving forward.
Next item is the IMET disbursement update. Anna's gonna give us a quick presentation.
So many, we had invested in IMET, which was, is all for governmental entities. And then they had some fraud take place, as I stated in the memo. They have, you know, gone to attorneys and collected as much money as they feel they're going to, so they're going to stop their collection process. And we've collected everything, so that's basically all I'm saying is we've collected everything that we're going to. And we have like ten cents in the accounts that we have, so I'm going to close those accounts, and we will no longer participate in IMET. Does anybody have any questions? Okay?
This clear. The memo was good. The memo was good.
All right, so the next item is the vaccine policy. So we're being asked to approve a new policy that was briefly discussed at the last meeting, that we would be presenting with this, potentially this meeting. The policy would require that staff be vaccinated unless they have either a medical or other exemption. It's following what's been the state mandates and the federal mandate, I believe it was. So anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask?
I do, actually, Kate. So the CDC just recommended or supported the FDA today on the booster. So does that require any consideration in this policy? Or we're just getting too complicated?
Yeah, so we, I talked to the attorney about it, and it was like, well, because they've gone back and forth, they, they recommended approving things as-is, and then if needed, we can adjust in the future. But right now, it, giving the vaccine, you know, the booster helps, right? No doubt. But we know that just having it in the first place is going to just help things tremendously.
Okay, I expected that, I was just wondering.
Yeah, so I do, I mean, I was kind of like, you know, like, no, no booster. Yes, a booster, maybe not, and so of course.
Yeah, I think until we get to a point where it's very clear how long your vaccine is effective, those are just sticky. So I mean, I guess, like, what does being vaccinated even mean in two years? We don't know.
Right, and I mean, this does not, this covers the initial. So if they're saying then that it requires an annual, you know, shot, this isn't covered. We, you know, I would bring that back to the board if it was something that, you know, was widely recommended and the board could discuss whether or not. We wanted to update this and, and do anything else with it. But this will get us in line with the other entities in the village. Either, they either are mandated, they have this, a policy, or they're about to approve one. So this way, we're kind of all still moving in sync together.
I don't know, I'm just going through it again. I don't remember if it says in here that, like, specifically what does vaccination mean? Just because of the confusion with the booster now, like, two doses, two weeks out, does that need to be defined?
Well, we can't say that because of the Johnson and Johnson. So it says that we, you have to be fully vaccinated.
Okay, that's true.
And so that would be defined for Moderna and Pfizer as two shots, and as Johnson and Johnson as the one.
Okay, my last question is, I know you said you wanted to implement it by November first, and I was just wondering.
No, no, just that would be when the policy would become effective, and then anyone not vaccinated would have forty-five days after that.
Okay, that's what I was saying, November first is really close.
Yeah, no, no, so we just want a chance to tell staff that this is happening, and then that gives them, if we find that they're, yes, two shots, if they need it, yes. We have four weeks, okay. Two people on staff, so we're not talking about a huge number, so I don't think it's, you know, we don't have dozens.
What happens with new staff, if you're gonna hire someone after this goes into effect?
So, so will, of course, apply to all new staff. We will be doing it as part of similar, which when we do the background check, we'll be asking for verification. And if they're not, we will be explaining, you know, sharing the policy, explaining that they'll have forty-five days after their first date of employment to be vaccinated.
Is forty-five days the general rule?
A lot of people have been doing thirty, Lori and I, and the attorney was like, whatever, it doesn't, you know, if you guys want to do a little longer. We felt that if, especially with like the religious medical exemptions stuff, we're like, well, if they wait a little bit, we were trying to give people a little bit more generosity. A lot of them have been paying thirty days. We thought forty-five would just cover our bases a little bit more. Again, we don't feel that this is going to be an issue, but.
Well, that's just a one-time thing, then, once forty-five days out, anyone who's hired in would have to be showproof and.
They would have forty-five days from their first date of employment.
Oh, okay, so forty-five days.
So like, say, no, say December first, someone is hired, and that's their first day. They would have until January fourteenth, because there's like thirty-one days in December, so.
And that's January fourteenth to get both shots?
Correct, to be fully vaccinated.
Both shots plus the two weeks, right?
That is a good question.
Well, I mean, I think vaccination means two weeks.
Yeah, so that would give them technically enough time.
Oh, sure.
It wouldn't, I think it would have to be sixty if you're doing.
The policy says to receive a COVID-19 vaccine, not for a vaccine to be fully effective.
Yeah, not, not for you to be fully vaccinated, but to receive, yeah.
But, but then how do we make sure that if it's the Pfizer or Moderna, that they're getting the two doses?
Right.
We have the vaccination card, and it says on the card.
No, no, but the language.
Sugar point.
The language.
Oh, I, okay.
So when we're saying you have forty-five days, you have forty-five days to, if you just say start the process, you're not closing it out, is what I guess I'm trying to say. And if you're doing one shot, and then Moderna, I think, was four weeks, and then two weeks, you're already at six weeks, so you're past the forty-five days. Sorry, not to.
The gym is two weeks.
What about, we say, as a condition of employment, all employees of Northbrook Public Library must receive a full dose of the COVID-19 vaccine?
Within forty-five days.
And that would be one or two, and it wouldn't mean the two weeks after, but then they would have received the full dose and.
Right, I'm just providing, trying to provide a situation where somebody gets one dose.
This is so funny, because like, this is what so many directors have been talking about, and I was served, and the attorney has looked at it, and no one, this has not come up at all. So yes, I, I think, would that work? That we would say, all employees of Northbrook Public Library must receive a full dose of the COVID-19 vaccine?
Within forty-five days.
And then they will have to obtain vaccination within forty-five days of this policy going into effect, or within forty-five days of their first date of employment?
And vaccination means full vaccine?
No, I would say that's, that's, no, vaccination has to mean receiving the COVID dose. That worries what's the problem.
Okay, so then employees will have to.
Will have to receive both doses or the COVID-19 vaccine, full dose of COVID-19 vaccine.
How about we'll have to receive a full dose.
What part are you guys in on this, sorry?
The policy, the first paragraph?
For me, it's under the policy.
Under policy, as a condition of employment.
Two doses of Pfizer and Moderna and, and the whole, or, not and, or.
Did you say it in the paper?
No, no, I see.
So where's the.
I do think it's important to specify that.
Yeah, I consider.
Because what happens if somebody just goes and gets their first dose of Pfizer and says, I got my vaccine?
Right, right, so they have to, so I think it's specified.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
I have a question about this clause under confidentiality. How does this work when you interview someone? Can you, you can tell them what the policy is, but can you ask them if they're vaccinated? You can't.
We, we can ask after we have offered them the job. As a condition of employment, we can tell them, much like a background check, we don't do drug tests here, but if you were to do a drug test, it would be very similar. And so we can ask them, so we would not ask them at the interview stage. Lori would be the only one that would ask, and she would ask after we've given the offer, after they've accepted the offer, and then as a condition of the offer, they have to complete the background check, and they have to then, we're telling them about the.
But can you tell them about the policy before you make the offer, right? Or do, or they just expect you to know?
Lori sends, Lori sends all of the information, including the offer letter and all the benefits package, as well as, you know, this is what the next steps are. So it would be included in that, but we wouldn't be asking them whether or not they were until after the offer letter was signed.
But you tell them it's a policy, they have the correct keys.
It'll say like next step, if you did a background check. We do a background check, we ask for proof of your vaccination, blah, blah, blah. And so that's how they would get the information, right? Okay.
Yeah, and Lori has, I won't show you, as I said, incredibly detailed checklist and templates for everything that she's already updated in anticipation. So in the event that we have, you know, have someone that we're hiring very soon.
Okay, so Kate, it sounds like we're gonna modify that first paragraph under the word policy?
Yes.
The first sentence is, I receive a full dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. And the second sentence will say employees will have to receive the full dose, the COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine within forty-five days.
And we're gonna specify that it's two doses of Moderna and Pfizer.
We're just, we're just saying fully vaccinated.
No, 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 full vaccine.
I think we have to specify, don't we? Did we talk about that?
What's the difference between fully vaccinated and full dose?
Because fully vaccinated implies the vaccine's effective.
That, yeah, fully vaccinated, I think, implies two weeks after your second shot.
Oh, full dosage, okay.
I can read what I put here based on what you guys said and see if this drives. Okay, so as a condition of employment, all employees of Northbrook Public Library must receive a full dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Employees will have to receive a full dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, two doses of Pfizer or Moderna, or one dose of Johnson and Johnson within forty-five days of this policy going into effect, or within forty-five days of their first date of employment, whichever is later.
Okay, that works.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the COVID-19 policy, vaccine policy as modified? The board.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion before we move to a vote? All right, if we can do this by voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any votes? Are there any abstentions? Any, were you voting?
I was not here for the full discussion, but I, I'm in support of what was just.
You can say anything you want. Okay, so I believe we have a majority, so.
I think Jamie actually voted yes.
She voted yes, I did, yeah. When we did the vote, so.
Were you asking her to voice vote over as opposed to?
No, I mean, I think she did.
Okay, either way, we have a majority.
Yeah.
But she voted yes, so it should go on record as yes, right?
Right. Next item is the annual staff appreciation week.
Here we go.
So last, drill, usually, last year, we, as a group, contributed money, and then Anna, I believe, took care of doing some nice things for the staff. Was it a gift card last year in there, or what was?
Something for the kitchen, right?
We bought items for the wellness room. Some artwork and a sound machine and a lamp and vase and.
Bookstand?
Oh, bookstands. We bought charging chargers, some baskets to put in the room, just to kind of soften it up a little bit.
Okay, so as a group, we bought a lot of nice items for the wellness room. I, in prior years, before COVID, each, the way we'd work is each of the trustees would pick a day, and we would come in and do something individually, usually bringing food of some sort. Because it's still COVID, I felt it would be probably more appropriate for us not to do things individually, that is. That is, each of us bringing in food and all that kind of stuff. I thought it might be more appropriate for us to continue the tradition, set us here up doing something as a group. And so, I asked Kate if she and Anna could present us with some options. So, Anna had passed out before the meeting, so if you have it.
Did I give one to Jane? Okay.
Yeah, so some options that they put together for us that we should do as a group. And this would be us each contributing some money to help pay for it. So, Anna, would you like to walk through the options?
So, I, yes, I can walk through them. So, I, I tried to think of three different ops and options. I called Once Upon a Deli. I asked what types of trays they had. And as you can see, they can do a breakfast tray, a sweet tray and bagels. When I put my costs together, I had done just like three trays of the breakfast tray and the sweet tray. And plus, I thought we do have some gluten-free people as well as some dairy-free people. So, we should kind of get some fruit, maybe some clementines or something like that. And that was how I came up with the cost and how much it would be per trustee. Kate had received something in the mail from Dairy Queen that they are doing, they're, you can place an order and $2 from every Blizzard that is sold is going to be donated to the Children's Miracle Network. So, that's always kind of nice. And, and this is kind of nice because everybody could order one, even if they're not here. We could put them in the freezer, they could pick them up at a later time. And then, the last option I did was I called Marcello's and I spoke to Larry. And he just did this for the chamber where they made individual pizzas for everyone and did individual salads. And you can see what the cost is for that and how much it would be. I, I divided the cost by six for how I came up with the per trustee cost. He said that dairy-free options, he would just make a larger salad and they do have gluten-free dough that he can make the pizzas on. So, those are my options.
Okay, so the question is out to us, what is it we would like to do? Before we get that, though, I have one quick question, Anna.
Yeah.
In the budget, is there a line item that would, if you wanted to, be able to use to hover, if we want to do one more, the more expensive items?
Yes.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
No, no, no question.
Okay.
That's perfect, thank you.
All 100 people are not going to be here on one day, so how do we split? Because before, when we all took a day, there was something there on each day.
Well, that's, that's why the Blizzards, we could put in the freezer and they could pick them up at a later date.
Or they could use the coupon, so that's why I kind of disgarrotated that because obviously 100 people are not coming here.
And Once Upon a Deli, we could split it up into a few days, right?
Right, I wouldn't, yeah, I guess I wouldn't have to do it all for one day. But then, for Marcello's, we could have everybody order pizzas and just put them in the refrigerator with their names on them. Because they're going to be individual pizzas and
Is there room for 100 of them?
Well, but some people will be here to eat.
Yeah.
Do you have room for 50 of them?
Yeah, we have two refrigerators down there. And if they come in boxes, we can just staff them and they would have cheese or pepperoni or sausage on it.
And I mean, Anna doesn't live that far away. Actually, Abby lives closer.
I probably do without any, without having kids at home, yeah, I do. But, you know, so that would work. I mean, Kate also had an idea of, you said Gail's Brownies?
Oh, yeah, you know, Gail's Brownies, she's a chamber member, she's here in our correction, makes the brownies here. She has all sorts of different pastries, she does individual little brownies that are cute. I mean, they're pricey, they're like five or six dollars a piece, if I'm not mistaken, so.
I like that idea too, though, because it's individual, it's individually packaged.
You live there five dollars times 100.
And it's a local business.
Yeah, well, and all of these are
Yeah, all of these are
I know, but I meant independent and local, right?
Well, Dairy Queen is too and so on.
Is it, or Marcello's? I was thinking Dairy Queen as well.
I just have a concern about anything that is not individually wrapped. I am a little leery about the trays where it's open. I would prefer to go with something that it's an individual, individual pizza or the mini Blizzard. So, that would be my
Well, and I do like the Dairy Queen history, the donation, I think that's nice.
Yeah.
There isn't really any, there's no
Usually, dietary options with the Dairy Queen. Usually, what we do for that is get like the fruit, they have like fruit popsicles instead.
Yeah, and they do have, they do have some lactose-free
Yeah.
Vars that I, that we could get.
Yeah, we've done the Dairy Queen thing on for, for previous, in other years, that, we know that there are options that will satisfy the dietary restrictions and stuff.
And it does truly help, her name is Jennifer, I mean, it, it will help that business and they are locally owned, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've been through
Yeah, a lot are.
Okay, well, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I think that that's probably a better option because having, something that's been sitting in a freezer as opposed to one or two day old pizza is a better option.
I'm just trying to provide different options.
Right.
Trying to run the gamut here.
Jamie, do you have any questions?
I don't know.
Sharon?
I would like to go to the store myself and pick out, no, I'm just kidding. Okay, everybody remembers. I'm just kidding. I like the Dairy Queen option, but as you were going back to that, you know, I'm happy to pay the $70. And, you know, I think that's reasonable. I think before it was like $25, but, you know, we never really covered it then, so I'm happy. Do you think it's special enough, though, if you guys have done it before? I mean, we, I really want to appreciate them and not just give them some Blizzards. You know, when I picked up food, I mean, right, we did it really nice. And just hand over some Blizzards, which they get any time of the year, is not so special.
I think the special part is us coming from the board to say thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that they would appreciate it, don't you think, Kate?
I, I think that they would, yeah. I mean, we haven't been able, I mean, normally, we do like a staff potluck and there's always like shared food stuff. And so, this just in and of itself from after the past year and a half is going to be like, oh my gosh.
Okay.
We can have a thing again, so I think that they will be very excited. And if you wanted to do, you know, something in addition, you could like get a, you know, like a big card that the board could sign saying, you know, thank you so much to the staff and we can put in a staff lounge, something like that. I mean, that kind of thing is
Flowers would be appreciated or is that
Um, you know, I think we probably want to stay away from, a plant would be okay, but flowers with the scent stuff, it can be really, depending on the person, we have some people with asthma and allergy stuff. So, we're trying to stay away from like fragrance and scents, so many things to think of.
Sounds good, I like Dairy Queen.
But no glitter, no, we don't have glitter in the library.
So, I don't know that we have a consensus yet, it's, I mean, I think it's going towards the Dairy Queen, but I'm not sure. So, I'm going to go around and just ask each person to say their preferred option, so.
Dairy Queen?
Dairy Queen. Dairy Queen.
Dairy Queen.
All right, so it's Dairy Queen, I believe. In terms of the date, Kate, do we have a date when it's been set as to when this would be?
Um, I mean, it can be whenever the board would like, do we want to do it maybe like the second week in November? So, it's not like so close to Thanksgiving, but it isn't, you know.
You gotta give me, I would like to send out a Google form and ask people what kind of Blizzards they want.
Yeah, it's a little easier because it's not a whole week, right? We're looking for a day.
So, you're talking like the week of November 14?
I was thinking the week of like the 8th, what if we shoot for like the 12th?
Okay.
Does that seem Friday, November 12th?
Okay. And Dana, I think you sent us a PayPal link last night.
Yeah, like, I don't need to be here for it, right? So, I don't know.
So
And I'm terrible about sending in my money, so
I will send you a PayPal link.
Oh, great.
No, you're still bad.
I'm going to be here in the first and the second for meetings. So, we can do, if you want to do a card, we can do it in the first or the second. And then, in terms of payment, if you wanted to bring cash, we could pay cash. If it's a second, if you want to pay value, you can do
I think, I only ask that you, maybe if everyone agrees that you follow with us if someone forgot because we didn't forget on purpose. Or we just, if we just do it all on that day, maybe we just take care of it, that's it.
And we could put it as a reminder when we send out a reminder for the meeting.
That'd be great.
Tell them, we can't check out folks until they are
Your library card is not working. And it's been to your card.
You have $70 to do teams. And then, so is one of the board members going to pick up a card? Did you guys want to do that?
I'd be happy to do it.
She likes to pick up things up.
I would be happy to pick up a card.
Barbara offered, Jay. But unless you want to, Jay. Oh, Jay.
I miss your fights about this.
Oh, Jay, oh, Jay, that's so bad. Funny, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
All right, so the next item is closed session. I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to a file I OCS, I want to get a brief, deeply, the selection of a person to fill a public office that is defined in the act, including the vacancy in a public office for the public body to give empower to, under lawful ordinance, for the discipline, performance or removal of occupants of a public office, the public body given power to do the action under lawful ordinance.
So moved.
Sure, I'm fine. First, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jennifer, will you please have a roll call vote?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Glavinter?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
All right, so we have the approved motion, so we'll go into closed session. Okay, so it's 9:02, we're back in general session. Next item on the agenda is agenda building. So, for the next meeting, we have the new board member appointment and square in. A per capita grant review, revisit visiting other libraries, meaning we'll talk again about whether or not we want to go and do a tour of another library and so when. And then, continue discussing, if necessary, if needed. I'm not sure that's Is there any other items anyone would like to
Because you didn't have the updated, personnel committee has the director evaluation recommendation ready to share with the board from the past.
Okay, so I'll give you ten minutes. Any else you want?
Do we have a board meeting in December?
No. No, holidays.
We used to in a, in a day.
So, the first three years I was here, we definitely had enough people present for a forum, so we stopped doing
It's not on the calendar anymore.
Yeah, we take it off, so we don't approve one, we just don't have one on the schedule anymore.
Okay, meeting will be adjourned at 9:03 PM.